Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Um, we have to start with the public comment period and number one on the list is number one and only, Beth Watts and Lindsay Gant. You guys can come forward. Up to this microphone, just say who you are.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Gant.
And I'm Beth Watts. Okay, well, we would like to talk to you about an idea that we have. We're kind of wanting, Lindsay's got a handout for you. We were kind of wanting to see if you guys would be interested or think that it was a good idea to do a dog park. Now, I don't mean a full-on dog park right now. What I mean is just a pop-up dog park. And by that, I mean just one day where we can set up some fencing, have some rules posted, which the rules are going to be in your packet of information there, and just gauge the interest from the community. So, we've got a couple different ideas for a location. And we just kind of wanted to just see if we can create some interest and see if there would be people interested and kind of what that would look like for Council Grove if we did that. We kind of want to, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say a couple of reasons that were, this idea even came about is we've had, as dog owners and members of the community, business owners in the community, a lot of people talk about how we don't have a dog park, we just don't have one. So, let's gauge some interest. I have in here why a dog park is a positive experience. It promotes a sense of community, creates a spacious outdoor activity for humans and dogs alike, creates an additional activity for people to participate and enjoy, gets people out and about around town, and it provides, like Beth said, a good way to see if there is interest in something permanent happening down the road.
So, our goal is to maybe look at Saturday, October 9th, to doing just from 8:00 in the morning to noon. We'd like to use, we have a couple of location ideas that we'd like to use, and that also would run in conjunction with the fall patio party at Grove Gardens. And I've spoken with Ellie, and I mean, she was fine with it. Her patio party starts at 11:00, so we thought we would do this in the morning. We would, you know, we need a pretty large area. We'd like some shade if that's possible, but maybe by October 9th, the heat wave in Kansas will be officially over, I don't know. But at the entrance of the dog park, we would have a large sign there that we would get done down at Kansas Graphics. And it would state what the rules are for the dog park. And I mean, you can, I don't need to read those rules too, you guys can read through those and see. And then if you guys had anything that you thought maybe we needed to add, or that maybe wasn't necessary as a rule, I don't know, we just kind of took these from...
Yeah, I looked at about 20 different dog parks, including ones in Emporia, Manhattan, to come up with some basic rules. These are pretty standard across the board. Dogs can't be aggressive, if they show aggression, they have to leave the park. It's really enter at your own risk. We have to make it very clear that if you do enter the dog park, anything that happens after that is your responsibility. If your dog shows aggression, damages, injuries, anything like that, it is all on you. The city, the county sponsors, volunteers, nobody assumes the risk but the dog owner themselves.
Yeah. And, you know, there's some specific rules too about the ages of people and also pets that can be in there. You know, there would be no children under seven that would be allowed, puppies under four months, things like that are not allowed at the dog park. And then again, we just had like some different ideas for sponsorship. So, like, you know, as the owner of the coffee shop, say I decided to sponsor one of the pop-ups, you know, it would be coffee and canines, or if Lindsay did, ales and tails, just some different things. For the first one, we probably wouldn't have a sponsorship, we're just going to kind of, like I said, do the pop-up, gauge the interest, kind of see, you know, what kind of interest we have in the community. Maybe people don't want a dog park, I don't know. I've heard some other people say that they thought it would be, you know, a good idea, but, you know, who knows? People are interested in things one day and then not the next, so. But what we would need would be a temporary fence, so we were thinking of maybe just using the fencing that...
The city owns that...
The city owns the...
...that we put up for events, for Wushang Days and different things.
Yeah.
The temporary panels.
And then, maybe some, if we had some benches, that would be great. Trash cans, which we can provide the trash cans. And I think the city has the little doggie bags for waste already. You know, and then things that we would like to have, of course, are listed here. Anyway.
And on the last page, you can see kind of what are our actual requests and the reason that we're here tonight is the approval of the entire concept and having this be something that happens throughout the year. The approval of using your fencing panels, the approval of using possibly our ideal spot would be the Noshua River Walk on Saturday, October 9th, from 8 to 12. We would, if this does sound like something that we'd like to continue on, we would come and ask for a date and get approval on a date moving forward, so everybody's schedules align. We'd ask that the city help us with labor and equipment for moving that temporary fence panels to and from the Riverwalk area, and provide labor and equipment for moving the benches in and out of that area. And we'd really like with all that work, knowing that the city would put that work into us, into something like this, that city at Council Grove would be kind of the main sponsor, it would be a city pop-up dog park.
I think that's kind of all we have. Does anybody have any questions for us, or?
Did you guys check on insurance? Because I know the insurance is different, the city insurance, unless it's the city that has a dog park, the city insurance doesn't cover it.
Right, but everybody assumes responsibility for themselves when they're in the dog park.
I understand that, but it's on city property, so if somebody gets bit by a dog and there's not, I've talked to Tim Toner, because we've talked about doing a dog park before.
Okay.
That's something that needs to be looked into a little bit further.
Okay, no, we can do that.
No, that'd be great.
Yeah. And then the panels, I don't know how conducive that's going to be to keep it in small dogs and things like that. And it's also really labor-intensive for the guys to move those panels, because there's still one at the armory.
Okay.
And it takes a whole half a day to move them, depending on how many panels you want. So, I don't know.
It definitely wouldn't be the whole, like at Wushang Days, when the entire park is covered, it definitely wouldn't be that.
It'd be nice to know how big of an area you guys want.
Yeah.
So, I can talk to Jeff and then kind of gauge how many things it takes, the time we've spent doing that.
Sure, and we can kind of get you those figures, we can go like walk it off.
Yeah.
Or...
That'd be awesome.
Do you know what size those panels are length-wise?
I think they're 12-foot.
12-foot.
I think they're 12-foot.
That'd help kind of calculate.
Yep, absolutely.
I was going to ask, but I realized it's a new question, if there was going to be a separate area for small dogs, but those fences wouldn't hold...
They do have a space at the bottom of them, yeah.
Well, and they'd go right through them too, I mean, they're, you know, that far apart, so.
We've talked about putting in a dog park. Instead of doing just a pop-up one, doing a dog park, the problem is finding a space to put a permanent dog park. And we have fencing and all that stuff to do it.
Sure.
We have all the fence from the ball fields.
Oh, okay. Do you think that's something that would, but that's something that has to be permanent? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that would be permanent, yeah.
Yeah.
Pop-up ones, I don't think are a bad idea, it's just the time involved in taking them, putting them up and taking them down and things like that, and trying to mix that in with all the other stuff the guys are doing all the time.
Sure.
I know it wouldn't be all the time that you guys would want that, but just trying to figure out how to balance all that and figuring out the insurance and things like that.
Are you thinking that somebody would be, I would think the first one, that you would probably want somebody there physically there for the whole time, at least for the first one.
Yeah, yes.
To, you know, kind of supervisor.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, people don't think it's just a, you know, a free-for-all.
Right.
You know, that would be another concern.
We have had this discussion a number of times, and not only for locals, but just for tourists in town, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
We've realized for some time it's really...
Yeah.
Almost a necessity. It's just, like Nick said, we can't really figure out a place that will work and provide water and provide things that's needed.
Right.
Well, we're looking at shade and for the human people, and also, or the dog people, I guess, the dog, not the human people.
And convenient.
And also, you know, the, it's something that makes people look at whether they want to move to a town. I know that in Iowa, we had talked to the economic development people down there, and they said that three out of the four people who applied to be dentists in their area, or who were looking at their area for dentists, asked if they had a dog park. And they said, after the second one, they started saying, "Well, maybe."
We'll see, what's coming.
And then also, they, you know, there are grants out there available for full-time dog parks, or there were, but we've kind of put it on hold a little bit because of COVID and all, but, you know, we thought there were other things that were necessary at that point.
What are you guys' thoughts on a pop-up?
Did I just talk to anybody that's done this as a pop-up deal?
No, actually, the reason I mentioned it is because I was listening to a podcast about community involvement, and there was a guy on there talking about ideas for, you know, getting involved in your community. And he was talking about people in his community wanting to do a pop-up dog park. And I was like, okay, well, we do, you know, I've heard of like pop-up, like, you know, restaurants and different things, and I was like, well, why couldn't you do a pop-up dog park? So, I haven't personally known of anybody that has done one. Like I said, I just heard about it on this podcast and thought maybe it would be a good idea, so then Lindsay and I got to talking about it.
And I just read about it across different places in the country. Every town I've lived in before I moved to Council Grove had a dog park, permanent one, so I thought it would be a great, like you guys already know and have spoken about, a great addition.
The fact that it keeps coming up, though, does the interest...
Yeah, sure. So, another community member that I talked to, just, you know, we were talking about different areas, and I don't know if this is an area that would work or not, but this was just an area that was thrown out, is the area on Lakeside? Lakeside, thank you. I was going to say it's above my house. But, you know, that big park that's up there...
That'd be a good place, and I think there's actually water up there.
And, okay, and so that was another idea.
Becker Park, you know what I'm talking about? That would actually be a good place, because that park, a lot of that park's not utilized for anything.
Right.
Yeah, it's wide open.
Yeah. So, and that was another place that we had kind of...
Like I said, we have fencing and the ability to do all this, just find a permanent place to put it and not, you know, pissing everybody off.
Well, that's going to be hard.
We're not putting it down here at the Axe property on the corner down here, because we own that, and there's people that went for that. And then you have to deal with the amphitheater and parking and now the sidewalk down to there and things like that. We look at, oh, behind the Katy Depot, that is an emergency landing area for helicopters in the event of an actual disaster, so that's out.
We were ready to pull the trigger on that one a long time.
Oh, really?
Then I checked into it, and we can't, we don't have another place to designate as an emergency landing area in the event of a...
Is that behind the fire station as well as the Katy?
Yes, the whole area right there. Yep, that's why it has this flag, the windsock flag.
That's too bad, because it would be available for...
That needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I hadn't known that.
Yeah, it was on the ground, and I picked it up the other day, I just haven't mentioned it to the department or council yet.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, it would be nice if it would be available for people driving through the city, a sign be apparent that it was right there.
Yeah, and I mean, that would be the only thing about it, being on that, like, like sign, like sign, excuse me, it's kind of up there, you know, kind of hidden a little bit, yeah.
Mindy has the...
Does the city still have any of the snow fence they used at Wushang Days?
That's what I was thinking too, snow fencing and Tepos.
Yeah, the snow fencing.
Were pretty good for...
And smaller dogs, they couldn't go through.
Yeah.
Do we still have any of that, or do you know?
I think Wushang Days owned most of it.
I think, yeah, I think Wushang Days probably has that in storage.
The city doesn't have a bunch of that, because we don't, we got to put up barricades and things like that, but Wushang Days has a bunch of it.
It's probably in the storage unit.
It wouldn't be real pretty, but that for a pop-up, you know, that would be a good way to start, rather than moving all those big heavy panels. Plus, it keeps the small dogs.
Yeah.
You know, and so, yeah, good idea. I mean, I think we'd all kind of thought that. So, what are you guys' desires?
I don't have a problem with it, if we can figure out a way to do it economically and, you know, get it up and take it down and all that.
Insurance is an issue.
Yeah.
Insurance would be an issue first, but I don't have an objection to that, no.
If we can get the hurdles cleared.
Why don't we, do you want to look into the insurance?
Yeah, I have enough to do it.
Okay, why don't we do that, and we'll just kind of step forward from there, we'll have to take it step by step and go from there.
That sounds great, okay, thank you all.
I don't think we need to vote on it at this point, if we find out what the necessities are.
That sounds great, thank you so much.
How was last evening?
You too.
This is another panel we need for that, nine.
Yes, a fifth, a little fifth.
Yeah, we still have one more council meeting, so we could still use that, like that sheet as a... Okay, moving forward, let's go to the consent agenda. Minutes from the previous meeting, appropriations, no cabinet transfers today. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, do you have a second? Okay, moved to second end. All those in favor?
I will appear.
Want to extend to?
I will appear.
Four to extensions? Okay, four to zero, movement passed, thank you. Old business, North River Walk extension update.
So, the pole that got hit by one of the contractors is supposed to be in on the 28th, and they said shortly after that arrives, they'll be here to install a new pole, rewire all the poles that was already supposed to be done, and then install the LED lights. So, hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, that will all be wrapped up and taken care of.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions about that?
It's looking nice.
A lot of people using it, I know that, every time I drive by there in the evening, there's several people on it, so.
I know my car problem is, but that new grass, I don't want that stuff, because those army dogs are going nuts again.
Yeah, Wendy Fuller was telling me about that today, actually.
Yeah, they're crazy. So, we may have no grass left in town by the time it falls over. New business, city audit, Cindy Jensen.
Hi. Okay, so, I think you all have the, did they have copies before?
No, I gave them copies for this, maybe it's the copy I gave them.
Okay, so, I have the audit here, there's two letters inside. The first letter is one page, talks a little bit about, this audit's not an audit of your internal controls and how everything's set up, but when you go through, you notice things. And part of it is that you're small, whenever you have a small entity, you have a lot of people being a jack of all trades, so it makes it uncomfortable on you all to pay attention, to look at the details, and to, Nick, everybody, to help each other out, and, you know, look at what's happening and ask questions. That letter is better than what you've had in the past, it's going the right direction. The second letter, I'm going to let you probably look at it, it's your leisure, it's one we're required to give you by professional standards. It talks about the audit process, it talks about difficulties, I didn't have significant difficulties this year, talks about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Most of the misstatements are what I would call timing in nature. You have a cut on December 31st, and in the Kansas Sprigglator basis of accounting, receipts are income when you receive them, and expenses are expenses when you incur them. So, you will incur some expenses in December but not pay for them till January. So, a lot of this is maybe moving it on the right side of the year. Your fund balances in the end are all acceptable, it's just a matter of they're, we're moving them back and forth. That was the line share of the entries, which are also attached on here. I don't know that there was too many others that were adjusted, just a few. Then the report itself is on page one, it's in the bound portion of the document. It is an unmodified, well, it's actually not unmodified, it's a qualified opinion, the way you're doing the lake, the city taxes on the land are really your taxes, but the way you have it, the cabin owners pay it. It doesn't run through the city, it goes directly through there, so it doesn't go through your books. So, the exception is, it's all right, except for technically, that income should run through the city's books and the expense should go out. And it's not very, it would be a lot of work to do that, so that's the reason it is modified, and it's only modified for that particular situation. Page three is your snapshot of all your funds as of December 31st. You can see you started the year at 4.5 million of unencumbered cash and ended at 4.7, so everything seemed to be chugging along okay. I believe like some of your sales tax funds and stuff had a good year, which is actually what I've seen in several different cities, that people did stay home clearly, because the sales tax revenues did nicely. I don't know how long that will happen, continue, but, you know, this is it. Anyhow, that's the statement. Beyond that, your notes to your financial statement. Most of those are pretty self-explanatory. On page six, it talks about, there's, I don't know all the statutes, that's Bill's drop. I only know what's on this checklist. And on the checklist, one of them is that you can't go over your budget. Your sales tax fund did go a little bit over, I think we decided that was because of debt refinancing and timing on payments and stuff. Probably should watch it, probably should have amended the budget, but I don't think it's such a egregious thing that anybody's going to have any problems with it. And then the other one, you're required to send your payments in for debt at least 20 days ahead of time, and the confirmation came back, I think it was done 13 or 14 days. In some ways, you're at mercy of the postal service too, so just maybe something that they wanted to know on a couple of days earlier. Beyond that, the debt, you of course added on page 10, the energy upgrades this year, and then you refinanced your water bonds, so those are new issues, and of course, some of the old issues got paid off. On page 13, we put a note in there about your ARCA monies, that you've got, and half of them already. I did not put it, or suggest that they put the COVID, there's a COVID disclosure that you can put, and it pretty much says, we don't know, you know, everything, it was an awful year, blah, 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 but so far, most of my cities and counties haven't really had that awful year. Maybe had a lot more hand sanitizer and a lot more Plexiglas and a whole bunch of other things, but financially, hasn't been a terrible, terrible hit, so we did not put that on there. Page 14 is your comparison to budget, and you already touched on a couple of those funds that are just a little bit over. And beyond that, starting on page 15, is the same statements as page one, but it's just more detailed by fund. Not sure if you have any questions on anything, I know you just got it in front of you, so you probably don't have time to ask questions, and if you have questions later, by all means, just give me a call. I think I touched on like the, page 19 is the 1% sales tax, and you got almost $460,000 last year. And we benefited, what, 400, which is pretty close to what it had been, so it'd probably been running a little bit higher, but sales tax funds were good, of course, like a high rate, because then who knows what happens, but it's a whole other issue. Now, the .7 is on page 18, and it got 320,000. So, they both did well last year.
.7 is usually around 300,000.
Yeah. So, they both did, both did well, so, and I think they're probably doing a denture too, aren't they? Are they hanging in there?
Yep.
Just nobody can buy vehicles, and you can't buy anything, I do have to wonder how long that'll last, is what it is. I don't know if you have any questions on any particular funds. Most everything was, you know, pretty straightforward. Got a lot of changes over the last year. Page 31, of course, we had the Cares money, because you had to get Cares grants, that you took the money in, so that had to be added. Other than that, I really, it was pretty straightforward, I don't, there wasn't a lot of adjustments, so everything's pretty good. On page 40, they're still setting on quite a bit of lake tax refunds. It's amazing you can't get people to take their money back.
And we've talked, we're going to, I'm going to talk to Bill about doing...
Unclaimed property.
Unclaimed property, so we can get it out of...
And I don't know how long you have to wait before you can send it there.
We had it for a couple of years now.
I think it's seven, I'll have to look again.
It's seven years.
Either five or seven, I think.
Well, so we got a while yet.
Yeah.
But we can't find people, or people don't want to do paperwork to take the money.
Yeah, and some of it, I'm sure, is like grandma's trust probably dissolved a long time ago, and they don't even have an ability to cash it back, even if they're at it, so, yeah, it's unfortunate that it is for the kids, so anyhow, that's all I have. I don't know if you all have any questions or concerns, and if you do later, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions for Cindy?
Nope.
At this point? Okay. Do we need to vote to approve that audit or anything?
Nope, it's done. You guys already voted to have her do the audit.
Yeah.
So, she had checked, you signed up there, so we're already going to pay her for it too, so.
Okay, that's the important part. All right, well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, this time, I have a police and fire committee recommendation, that I would like to make an appointment, Marquis Godley. The police and fire committee recommends the appointment of Marquis Godley to full-time class B police officer at a pay rate of 1650 with a six-month probationary period. This appointment is contingent on passing the drug test, the physical, the background check, and the psychological examination. So, I would like to make that appointment, and I would appreciate a motion to approve that appointment.
So would I.
Do I hear a second?
Slicking.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Marquis Godley to full-time class B police officer. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0, thank you. Okay, and next, please, some fire committee recommendations, do you have some?
You're here, you know about it? You want to talk about it? You put that spot there. No, I was...
Brian was a milk lover.
Yeah, so, me, I went with Brian Brown, he's on a lot of committees for the fire department. And when we had to change over to a new fire chief, and they appointed new people to different positions, one of the things I tasked them with was going through inventory and seeing what they needed. From that, we found that a lot of the uniforms and fire suits and stuff like that are out of date, are getting really close to being out of date, so I asked them to come up with a list of things they want this year, and the next year, and for the next three years, so we get caught up. So, this is their first ask, they met with three different, three different groups as vendors that do the fire equipment, and this one was the best bang for your buck, so.
When I looked at that, I had one question. The lettering for the jackets and that, is that a safety issue to have?
So, yes, I was asking Brian about that, and he says, you know, when you're out on a fire call, their backs are to you. So, when you're yelling at someone, and you don't know who you're yelling at, to get back or help with something, you don't know who it is.
Right.
So, that's the importance of having the name on the back, so you can say, see who's in front of you, so if you need help, or you need to tell them to get out of the way or whatever, you're able to do that.
So, if somebody quits, the next person just becomes...
Yeah, I think they kind of, they feel off.
They, yeah, they're removable, they're built from a button on the back.
Okay.
So, we have it for that firefighter, if we get a new firefighter, we don't have to change out the uniform, we just get a new string, put back there, take that off.
That makes good sense.
Brian says it's a safety issue thing.
Yeah, and I kind of figured that's what it was.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Currently, I don't think anybody has that in their back of theirs, so there's a lot of people that don't, so he was concerned about that, and I...
People are getting tired of getting hit in the back of the head with a rock. People are getting tired of getting hit in the back of the head with a rock. So we never really pay attention.
They're saying, hey, you. Everybody looks when they see them.
We have money on the budget.
We have, it comes out of Equipment Reserve, and there's $24,000 in there for the rest of the year, so.
And we had asked, actually asked them earlier to feature and check on this, because we knew it was game.
I think we met with the old fire chief in January, and asked that he come up with something that never happened, and when we did the switch over, I, we did it again and got taken care of. So everything got inventoried and cleaned up, and so that they, they know what they have and don't have, so.
Yeah, it's been a while since it's been replaced, so it's good to, to take care of. Do I hear any questions, further questions about this? Don't hear much.
I'll make a motion if we accept it and give them the equipment they need.
Okay, second? And you're talking. It's been moved in seconded that we approve a purchase of fire department gear for $14,782 to come from Equipment Reserve. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Kinda add a little bit to your motion there for the amount and stuff, so people. Okay, next, we have the proposal for the camera system at the Riverwalk Park.
So yeah, we, when we're doing the camera system at the fire station, I also asked them to go look at the park. At the time, the gentleman that looked at it didn't think it was feasible, and I talked to Matt Smith, who installed the stuff at the fire station, and he went down there and looked at it and figured out a way to make it work. You guys probably, well, some of you maybe, we just had vandalism over the weekend down there, where somebody went and spray painted and marked up trash cans and dog signs and just graffiti stuff. So we need something down there.
House under the bridge and all over the place.
It's just all over the place. The guys, the street department guys went down there and cleaned all of it up today as best they could, so. But this, the people that did this tagging are the same people that did it before, because it's the same, it's the same tags. So they tagged the high school and the bridge behind the high school and stuff like that. But this is what it would cost to do it, and it's an estimated cost. If there's other stuff that's included, obviously, that won't get added on until the end.
Is there any kind of warranty on that equipment?
Um, it comes with warranties, yes. I don't, can't tell you exactly what that is, Jason, but I guess come with a warranty on it. And they're waterproof, obviously, because they're out in the elements and everything like that. We had the ones on City Hall, the street department, and the water plant for the last, it's been three years, almost three years, and haven't had any issues with them, so. And they're a good deal, because you can, I can access it from my phone, so I can pull it up, and I can access it from my phone and see what's going on down there. The police are able to do that. You're able to go back and watch video up, up to, I think, 90 days.
Oh, wow.
So.
One question, the bridge. The, the stuff that's done under the bridge now, is that, would that be a state issue at all, or is that just a city issue?
It's a city issue. The state's not gonna do anything about people doing graffiti.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying if we do, find out who does, is there a chance that the state will?
Defacing state property?
I don't know the answer to that, I mean.
I'm just curious.
They cleaned it out there, we'll get it off the bridge, so it's not, it's not their.
So it's too bad that somebody that has talent like that just uses it for good. So it's, yes, but, but anyway, and somebody suggested to me today that we put out a, and I know we're, this is kind of a little bit off the side, but that we might wanna put out, out a reward if there was somebody that turned those people in, so just a, just a thought, you know, as we go forward. So anyway, but back to the camera proposal. Do you guys have questions on that? Is it, do we have it for up there?
What's that?
The camera proposal.
I don't have the whole proposal, that's the cost. And the proposals, everybody's packed, you know, it's on page six.
I just thought it'd be good for people then. Mindy wanted to show people. Does anybody have any questions about that proposal?
How quickly can it be installed if we approve?
Well, they have to, so once it gets approved, I tell Matt we wanna do it, he has to order everything, and usually, I think it's a couple of weeks. I think that's what it took at the fire station, was a couple of weeks for him to get everything in. And then I have to set a time to install, but, so.
And will there be power there and everything done?
Yeah, there's some stuff in here we'll have to verify, and if not, we'll have to take care of it. And I'll handle all that with the street department guys, or whoever we need to handle it with, so.
Okay. If I don't have any more questions, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Tri-City Wireless proposal for 635981 for surveillance equipment.
Oh, second.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded to.
And it comes out of infrastructure.
Infrastructure?
Yeah.
Okay. To approve the camera proposal from TCW for 635981, to come out of infrastructure. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It's an important thing. Spend a lot of time and money, they have to look at amounts, and you say something about it.
It's frustrating, because you know, you had to voice it, so it had to happen Saturday night sometime, after you guys were done. We, Sean's been heard about it on, I think it was Sunday at some point.
It was nearly 11 o'clock before we were out of there.
Yeah, so it was late, and that's usually what happens down there. Kinda like the pavilion down there, they take the bricks and flip them off the, the back, and throw rocks on top of the building, and just tear stuff up, so.
Not enough to do.
Yeah, it is, it's scary.
So how much time do you think we'll need in executive session?
It's just an update, it shouldn't take 10, 15 minutes?
15?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
This time, I would make a motion, we go into executive session, 15 minutes, attorney-client privilege with the entire council, the mayor, city administrator Nick, and city attorney, Bill.
Can I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. Moved to go into executive session for attorney-client privilege for 15 minutes with the attorney, the administrator, all of the council, man? All those in favor? Governor Hart comments. Let's start with Jason.
I've got, I was gonna ask Nick, have you gotten any further on the radio deal?
Yeah, so I, oh my goodness. The guy's son, who said all that up, is supposed to stop by tomorrow, Thursday, and look at the system, to see what system it is, and see if there's an ability to update, because he said there is updates even due to him. He's talked to REA, he's worried about location, because it needs to be a certain elevation. And REA, I guess, I don't know if they've agreed to allow us to put it up there, and house it up there. I don't know that yet, because he was gonna talk to them about it. And then he was gonna help us get everything set up for it, and tell us what we need to do.
I understand.
So that's kind of where we're at with it. And I've reached out to the state. The person that does the tourism for the state of Kansas, they don't have a person appointed to the St. X. Byway. They don't have a, a person that's managing that right now. So when I called there, they didn't have much information, and I sent an email back to Diane, she sent it out to the group, and I got a response from this guy, and he knows all about it, so.
Okay, great. And thank you to the Santa Fe Trail 200 Committee. That was a great weekend. Great weekend.
Thank you. Mark?
I heard lots of good comments when I was there Friday night about the amphitheater and the show, and where everything was put on, so a second one. Councilman Booker said, you guys did a fantastic job.
It's, um, it's been, in some ways, a long summer, and in some ways, it's gone very quickly.
I'm glad.
Yeah, thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Hey, Nick, did I hear you say that we're gonna be getting started on some of the late shelters out there?
We have a pain here, I think, just time.
I know.
It's fun time to do it.
I had a picture of you about it all summer, because I knew everyone was good.
Yeah.
So it's okay, I've been taking mine a little bit out.
That's all I got. One more thing. Is there any update on the 20 mile an hour request that's put into the state?
State, no, yeah, I haven't heard anything. State's pretty good about taking their time, so Sean was working on it, and I hadn't checked, followed up with him about it. So I can do that, though.
I drive by that every day, and I always wonder if I'm gonna see a 20 mile an hour sign coming down.
Am I speeding yet?
Yeah, I'll wait for a ticket.
Okay, Steve, that's your turn.
Same as everybody, I think you guys have done a fantastic job. The weather was really nice for you this weekend, and I'm gonna always give it thanks, but thank you all.
And thank you for spraying for mosquitoes.
Yes.
They were crazy bad out there where I was standing for the parking. So when I walked in, they weren't bad at all, so it was good that you took that, they were crazy. They were bad that night.
Okay, Larry?
I have nothing to say, ma'am.
Okay, Sharon?
Well, I wanna say thank you for what you've said. It, it, we, we put a lot of work into it, but we had some good events, we felt really good about them. But I just wanna thank the city, because the city helped us with just one problem after the other. And thanks to Nick and his crew, we, we got it done. It was, it was a challenge. The amphitheater is a wonderful spot, we've got a great facility, but as far as the pavement was concerned, it changed everything around, and we had to kinda readjust everything, and so that took some challenge. I don't know if any of you had a chance to get over to the, the Council of Park for the wagon show, but that turned out to be an amazing event, too. Mark Brooks was one that, he did all the legwork for that one. And it's, we, we got a lot of compliments from the people that, we had wagons from Texas and Wyoming, and just a long way, and they're saying, when are you gonna do it again? And it'll, keep doing it, it'll be better. So I think it's another event that probably will occur on a regular basis, and hoping something good, so. I just thank the help that we got from everybody, it was very, very appreciated, so we wouldn't have done it without it, so thanks.
You know?
Well, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Nick?
Um, why not, Sharon? I told you guys about the graffiti. I started working on the request for qualifications for Safe Drops of School, and it has to have a committee. And the last committee we had on it was the street department. I don't know if anyone has an issue with the street parks department being the committee again.
As long as they're willing, I don't think that would be a problem.
Because they're the ones that helped with the last one, for phase one.
Is that okay with street committee to work in Safe Drops of School? Okay.
And that's all I got.
The hand railings for the amphitheater.
So those were supposed to go in last week, and I showed Sharon photos. They had an issue with powder coating when they went to pick them up. Some of the powder coating was real thin, where it was in corners and things like that, so concrete construction didn't accept them. And as concerned was I wouldn't accept them, because I wouldn't have. So they told them they had to fix it, and when they went to fix it, they added powder coat over the powder coat that was there, and they got a bad batch of powder coat. And when they went to cook it, to cure it and everything, it bubbled up. So they had to seam last and start over. The company that they bought the powder coating from, is I think from Kansas City, they came down to see what was going on and helped them fix the problem, but that's what happened with that.
Are they, so are they gonna have a color to them then?
Yeah, they have a color to them. Yeah, I think they're beige color, if I remember correctly, yeah. So that's what the committee picked out, was a brownish color for them.
But we didn't get them in.
No, well.
But we got through it.
Yeah, we got through it. And I don't know if anybody down there had seen the lights on stairs, we had those put in.
You need to go down there at night and check it out.
Well, we took them down. We took them out, because we don't want people tearing them up. So we made it so they're removable. That way, people ain't down there breaking them and stuff.
They were a big help.
Were they?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know if they'd be bright enough, but it was only 12 per row, and we staggered it.
Yeah.
And we have more, so I told Sharon and Mark, if they think we need more, we can put more up.
They were huge help.
Did you think they were, I mean, you were up there, so.
I went down there, one of your, I think they put them up on a Thursday, and I went down to.
I think Wednesday they were.
Wednesday, and I came down there while you guys were practicing, they had just turned on, and it looked pretty neat.
They're solar, is that what those were?
Yep, yep. I think the price difference, I think I have $800 and 80 of those, and I think to do all the conduit wiring, to put permanent ones in, was almost 40 grand.
Is there any issue with taking those down and storing them, or do they need to be, you know, charged and?
They have an on-off switch, so when you're not using them, you hit the button and turn them off.
So that saves the battery, then?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
But they're down for the winter.
Yeah, we took them down. Unless somebody is, is gonna use the amphitheater in the evening for something, we'll put them back. I mean, they're not hard to put up. But with the vandalism and stuff, actually, Jeff asked me about it, and I said, yeah, take them out, because I don't want people down there tearing them up or messing with them. So until we get some cameras down there, then we could maybe leave them down permanently, but.
Cameras predator drone.
So. All right, nope, I'm done.
The only thing I have is to say the same thing, Sharon, you're in a committee, wonderful job. It was, lots of people in town enjoying, they really enjoyed the wagons, I was down there at time or two, and I noticed how much they really enjoyed those. I've heard that the performance was the best they've ever seen, because of the changes and everything, they, they loved, people have really been positive about it. And I know that you guys at Fire did a great job, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take a little break, get a little, get a little rest.
I talked to people from Arizona, Oklahoma, Texas, Missouri, Arkansas, Nebraska, I think I even talked to somebody from Wyoming, and I was like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're from all around.
Lots of people said they heard about it on the radio.
Good, I'm glad you knew that, because we never know, we did some radio spots, so it's, it's hard to tell whether you're getting the right spot or not.
The restaurants were busy, and, you know, I think people were busy, you know, people were enjoying a nice weekend.
Well, that always helps, dude.
Everybody behaved.
The weather was nice, that's true.
I'd also like to take a minute to thank the city crews, because I saw them out, working and working, working. And the law enforcement, they were out doing things, all kinds of stuff. I think, I just wanna take a minute and say that the city is looking really good.